Good evening. I'd like to open the seventh meeting of fiscal year 2020 of the Milton Planning Board. I am Cheryl Taggias, the Chair.
Denny Swenson, Secretary.
You should be a member.
Julia, William Clark.
William Clark, Planning Director.
Allison Cullen, Assistant Town Planner.
And welcome, Allison.
Oh, thank you very much.
We are all excited to have you join the planning team.
Thank you, Bill.
Here comes.
Where she's.
Sure, here comes Kathleen, though. We'll just wait till Kathleen comes in and then we will not be joined by April. She was called out of town, so. But we do have Kathleen.
In record time.
And thank you for racing here.
And her wings look tired.
So, yes. Sorry, I have to take off my, my tags. Dinner tickets, yeah.
So we're joined by our fellow member, Kathleen O'Donnell. So Kathleen, we were just going to have Allison introduce herself a little bit more than just her name.
How are you? It's great to meet you. I think we may have, yes.
Allison, people watch our show here. So they may be interested to hear.
So I am coming from the city of Boston. I worked in the Boston Planning and Development Agency up until about a year and a half ago, and then I went to community preservation. I did a lot of projects related to rezoning the city, looking at streamlined processes, and represented several projects before their board. And recently, the community preservation, we looked at procurement processes, how we help solicit small mom and pop organizations, whether it be open space or affordable housing or historic preservation. I know you guys don't have CPA.
Yes, but there are two town residents who are members of the steering committee for the community preservation coalition, me and Tom Kelly.
I love Tom, he's great, yeah.
So we get the great joy of going to the meetings and being able to say that, you know, two of your board members live in a town that's haunted down twice, I believe.
I took Boston a couple of towns, so there's always.
It's a little embarrassing, but.
So that's really where I'm coming from, and I'm very, very excited to be here.
Also, I don't know if you said, but you're also now chairing a neighborhood association where you live?
Yeah, so I'm the president of the Cedar Grove Civic Association, so your neighbor's right over the water. I've lived there. We bought our first house in 99, and we had an apartment in Dorchester before that, so very close proximity.
And you know Milton Village, then?
Yes, we spend a lot of time in Milton Village. It's a beautiful space, yeah.
Because Bill probably briefed you, or maybe April before, when I know she was part of the committee that you spoke to before coming here. But we've been working, the master plan implementation committee worked for the last few years on an overlay district there, and now the board's taking up discussion of that. So it's great that you can, you're joining just in time for that.
Yeah, it's very exciting. Yeah, thank you.
We're very lucky to have you.
Oh, I'm happy to be here.
Okay, so our next item on the agenda are administrative items. So our next meeting is next week, October 17th, and then we won't be meeting until November 14th, which would be our normal date in November. So our normal meetings are the second and fourth Thursdays of the month. Minutes from our.
Thanksgiving is the fourth.
The fourth, okay. So should we look at an alternate date for that now, or should we do that next week?
We do when April's here.
When April's here, okay. Julia, can you remind us next week to look at that?
As we do that, we are talking about November 21st as the first public meeting for East Milton at this point. Please put that in, even if it's just as a draft.
Okay.
We have Judy Barrett lined up for that. That's the plan at this point. In the folder that you have before you, the second part, there's two A and Rs, that's next week. Yep, there's paper clipped together.
Yep.
That's for next week.
Oh, okay.
Ask a question?
Yes, go ahead.
So November 21st, if that's the first, will there be like another meeting before that with that committee we talked about?
We would try to set up the steering committee before that.
Okay.
So I had us on the 14th and the 21st already.
You did?
Yeah.
You planned ahead of us?
No, I.
Knowing that we needed to?
We talked about that, I thought.
Did we already? And I didn't put it in mind?
The 17th and 14th?
No, the 14th and the 21st.
Well, the 21st, yes, we talked about that being Judy Barrett date, and the 14th was already on there.
Was already on there, right.
So I guess what we.
14th is our regular meeting.
Right, so what we're saying then is that we wouldn't have a regular meeting. It would be replaced by the big public meeting on the 21st. I'm assuming we all.
That would be a second meeting, yes.
Right, we all would be attending that.
Yeah.
So I guess then we wouldn't have a meeting, our next meeting wouldn't be until December, unless we have urgent matters. We can evaluate that, I suppose, in November. Okay?
Yeah.
All right, minutes. Not all of us have had a chance to review the minutes of our last meeting, so we will defer those. We do have a public hearing at 7:15, but I want to see if there's anyone here who would like to address the board for Citizen Speak.
Wait, I want to go through.
To Citizen Speak.
Well, the article, the public hearing is in regards to zoning articles for the January special town meeting. And then 7:30 would be for planning boards' suggested revisions to our own rules and regulations. So the comments for those could happen in that discussion, but if there's another matter that's not on our agenda that anyone would not like to wait too long to address this about, but I didn't see any, right? Okay, Bill?
I want to, beside you are the plans for 919 Brush Hill Road, and I'm asking the board if they can meet with the proposed developing team for Little Sprouts on, it's right beside the Atherton Street Firehouse. It's a preschool, private preschool, early education facility that would work 6:30 in the morning to 6:30 at night. It's for somewhere between 90 and 100 families, 24 staff. Their proposal is, they have one that is as of right. Because it's under the Dover Amendment, there can be no requirements, but that puts the building right up against the neighbors on two sides. They're making a proposal that they move the building closer to Atherton Street, put the entrance out on Blue Hill Ave, and then they would have to go to the zoning board of appeals for relief, for setbacks, relief for setbacks.
Yeah, setbacks.
They would wind up with having to go for site plan approval through this board, which would then report back to the zoning board of appeals. As of right, puts all the traffic onto Atherton Street, which is a very small residential street, taking and doing their proposed development, puts the entrance out onto Blue Hill Ave. It actually saves the neighbors from getting impacted by it. Do you want to have the pre-meeting? And if you did, it would be October 17th.
I'm sure it wouldn't be November 14th.
Your call.
And the reason is just I received a voice message about asking if we could.
For November 14th?
For November, not necessarily a date. Okay, so it sounds like there's benefit to having them do a plan that requires site plan approval.
Yes.
And so.
Going from a two-story building to a one-story building.
So if that's the case, then we, the zoning board of appeal might like our opinion before they make their decision, correct? So we've done that process before, comes to us, goes to the board of appeal, comes back to us. That seems to be something that the board of appeal likes, and we've been happy to accommodate that in the past. So I'm fine with having them come in for an informational discussion. Any other board member, have any other thoughts about that?
Yeah, I was curious, what are our parameters in comparison to the ZBA's parameters? Like what are we responsible for? In other words, like I'm wondering, I have a neighbor, Thatcher Montessori, lovely neighbors, very lovely people. That, having them right there on Route 138, it's a very dangerous stretch. So in hindsight, it might have been a better use if it went in a different direction, not that many vehicles all at rush hour, but I don't know if that's under our purview.
Well, it's not even, it's not a discussion about whether it's under our purview or not, because there are some things that are and some things that aren't. But the fact of the matter is the Thatcher-Montessori school and this particular project are both protected under the Dover Amendment.
Oh, okay.
So there are school educational uses, and that actually has just gone up to the SJC on McLean Hospital, same sort of thing, group home, you know, protected because of the fact that it's educational. So there are some things you can set forth in terms of health and safety, so site plan review is appropriate to sort of say, okay, fine, you know, you want better screening or, you know, that sort of thing, but we really can't do very much.
You can't limit the amount of use or anything like that because it's educational and falls under Dover and it's grandfathered in?
No, 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 it's not grandfathered, it is not an idea about grandfathering.
Once the site is, no, so.
You can go on any, they can go on any site.
Any site.
And they're not required to follow local zoning for certain uses, like a house of worship.
Yeah.
Educational.
Church, health, you know, yeah. There's sort of, the Dover Amendment named after the town of Dover, which tried to stop some project. So, not surprisingly. And so it's one of those situations where you can set some kind of parameters, but not very many.
Interesting.
Yeah, it's come up a lot with Curry College, for example, where, when they've built new buildings, there's very neighbors, there's a fair number of neighbors who have concerns about the location of the buildings, because they put them on the perimeter instead of internal at times.
Yeah.
But there's been a discussion that we, because of the Dover Amendment, there's very little towns really can do. But there are a few dimensional standards that we can look at.
Yeah, and you can sort of say traffic and that sort of thing, and you can always sort of say, you know, if there's a discussion and you're not forcing them, but they want to be good neighbors, you know, that sort of discussion kind of thing can happen, but you can't, in the end, force them to do something.
It's interesting, two and a half years, this is my first Dover.
Yeah, well, they, I mean, they don't, we've had, I've had them, you know, in some towns where I've represented, you know, housing trusts, and we've been putting over to group homes, because that's a great way to improve your housing count, because you get to count the beds, not the bedrooms. But, and there's always been somebody who's been screaming about it, but, you know, it's sort of an educational use, you're doing, you know, dealing with people with disabilities, you're training them and all that sort of stuff. So it's got an educational component, but you can, as I said, you can do some regulation of it, but not as much.
We have some group homes here, right?
Yeah, fair housing, another issue too.
Okay, so.
Thank you.
Rich, did you have any questions about it? We can't really talk about the merits of one thing or another with it yet. So let's see.
November 14th.
Let's see if, on the 14th, right. Bill has advised that for next week's meeting, and he told us in here there's two A and Rs, so let's try and review those and see what, be prepared for our questions next week, right? And we'll have.
Will we be getting information on this via email?
Bill, will we get something?
I will ask what they have.
Okay, so.
Can I take one of these?
No, there are two, it's either two different plans.
Oh, two different plans, okay.
So with two different sort of proposals.
We'll save those for the 14th, then, okay.
Okay, now, we will open the public hearing for our January 2020 town meeting zoning articles. There's two. One is an associate planning board member, and one is a language adjustment to wetlands, reference in zoning, which is under really a different jurisdiction than zoning, that we're seeking to make our zoning bylaw consistent with the way it's regulated now. Do I have that right, Kathleen?
Yes. It is, it's in our, we don't have any jurisdiction over wetlands, it was taken away by the legislature. So the reason we have, we have it in here, but we can't do anything about it, so it seems silly to have a provision that's nonenforceable.
So is there anyone here who has any questions or comments for the board relative to the wetlands regulation language adjustment? Okay, none. All right, so then on the associate planning board member, this is an article that the planning board had drafted initially last year, and learned not long before town meeting that the government study committee had done some research on such an article that we weren't aware of until right before town meeting. So we brought it back and said that we would like to speak to the government study committee, and we've done that, and they've had discussion about it, and we understand that they support the article that we have, and they've met recently about it. Bill, did you, have you heard anything further from Rick Neely?
I have not heard from them on anything.
Okay.
I do know that the board made changes at the last meeting. Those changes and town council's comments are built into this language that you see here.
Okay.
That's the same page I just handed you a couple of minutes ago.
Right.
We don't have a red line, do we? Because I don't.
There's no red line to it. These are the documents directly.
This is what was filed.
These are the submitted, submitted ones.
So again, maybe I'll read it in case there's, those who are watching are not familiar with it. The language is, "There may be an associate member of the planning board. The associate member may sit on the board for the purposes of acting on a special permit application in the case of absence, inability to act, or conflict of interest on the part of any member of the board, or in the event of a vacancy on the board. In such an event, the chair of the board shall file with the town clerk a written designation for the associate member to sit on deliberation of a particular special permit application. The associate member shall be appointed by a vote, by at least four members of the planning board, notice of which is filed with the town clerk. Any vacancy in the position of associate member shall be filled by a vote of at least four planning, four members of the planning board appointing a replacement, notice of which shall be filed with the town clerk. The term of an associate member shall be up to three years commencing on the date that notice of the appointment is filed with the town clerk. Any associate member may be reappointed by requisite vote and filing of notice without there being any break in his or her service as an associate member." All right, so we've already had discussion about this ourselves, we voted to put this language forward. Is there anyone here who has questions or would like to address the board relative to this article? Yes.
Also, I think you just got an email on one, two, if you want, I don't know if you want to.
This one?
No, no, this is about this one.
About this particular article?
Yeah.
Okay. Did Bill get it?
I'll find out. I just wanted to do a 23B3 disclosure. I belong to an association that Joe Sloan belongs to, namely the Milton Neighborhood Coalition, but pursuant to guidance from the State Ethics Commission, I feel that I can be fair and objective in carrying out my official duties as a planning board member on this topic, pursuant to the same, okay, that's it. It's needed to be official.
Good, thank you. Hello?
Hi.
I'm Joe Sloan, welcome.
Thank you, Joe.
Happy to have you here. I'm here also, I'm here partly as a town meeting member with all of my fellow town meeting members who are all here, they're probably all watching at home, to do my homework, because when this comes before town meeting, it would be good to be as informed. I did follow the board's discussion when it was talked about about a year, year and a half ago, and a lot of really good questions came up at that point. I know that a lot of the questions at the time seemed to focus around the idea of the degree of participation in board discussions that an associate member would have, and I wanted, I have a few questions that kind of in some of my notes that I would ask as I go along, and I just want to see if I have a clear understanding that as, the way the proposed bylaw is written, is really the purpose of this is mainly to provide the option of a seat on this board to fill the need for a super majority vote in the case of a special permit, where you would need four out of five board members to vote if someone had to recuse themselves or was absent, that associate would step in. Is that really the primary purpose of this as it's written?
Yes.
Yes, because what you want to make sure is that the planning board is able to function. So I, as been town council for cities and towns in my prior career, have run into situations where planning boards haven't been able to meet for several months, because somebody's out with cancer or some issue, and so you don't have, you know, you don't have a quorum, and you can't, you can't function. And so, whereas in a city, you have a department that can handle that sort of thing, in a town, you do not. So the idea with this associate member was to be able to provide for the continuing work of the planning board in the event of something happening, and, you know, we always have situations where there might be a conflict of interest or something like that that would disqualify one of us from hearing them.
It's a reminder that a special permit, to vote on a special permit, a member can only miss one of the meetings of the public hearing on that special permit. So you probably recall, some of our special permits are open for a long time.
Sure.
If someone is, you know.
When I decide to sail transatlantic, you know, probably in the next 15 minutes, yeah, that would be a problem.
And one of the things that you may recall also, this and the discussion of the article that did pass, which is changing the term from five years to three years.
Yes.
Is to hopefully allow more people who might take an interest in planning board activities not to feel that it might be too difficult for them to meet the requirements, like if they can only miss a meeting or two, that they feel like that's quite a commitment that they might not be able to make, and they have to make that commitment for five years. So it was kind of the two of them were being talked about in parallel at the time, thinking that, you know, it's not a bad thing to have more people and diverse backgrounds and interests, you know, kind of rotate through the planning board, right? So that was some of the, of the thinking behind it.
So the associate in that, in that situation would have to follow the same rules that planning board members, elected planning board members would have to follow in terms of attendance, for instance.
Oh, absolutely.
Would have to be.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Would have to be right there at the start of the process and there, through the entire process.
Yeah.
Right, exactly. So again, because of, because of some of the specific language in the proposed article, my understanding is that it, this associate would be called on in the case of a special permit application at the beginning of the process. Do you see any other roles or responsibilities of an associate to the planning board?
My understanding is by law that this can only apply to special permits. It can't apply to other kinds of activities that the board takes up.
So I, I did what I think some of the board members did, was a little bit of homework to see what other cities and towns around Massachusetts do, and I came up with such a wide variety of descriptions of the role and responsibility of an associate member, and I tried to figure out why these interpretations could be so different, when what's in the Massachusetts zoning act is really pretty, pretty limited and pretty straightforward. And I have a couple of examples of that, but it seems a little unusual, but it's possible that an explanation for those different understandings or interpretations of it could come down to a comma in the language. And this brings smiles to those of us who have, who have been at many town meetings before and seen, and seen many a well-intentioned conversation get derailed. If you look, you, you're not going to have it in front of you, but it's really very simple to understand, but in, in the proposed language that you have here, the sentence that starts, "The associate member may sit on the board for the purposes of acting on a special permit application." In the state's language, after that word "application," there's a comma. And if you read that entire sentence that's in the state's language with the comma, it reads more as a list of responsibilities and less as a description of the specific role in the special permit process. And that's just, that's just my interpretation, I'm not, I'm not a legal analyst, but I think it may be an explanation for why towns are interpreting this responsibility so differently. Just to give you an example, in the town of Ayer, the associate says that the chairman of the planning board may designate the associate for the purposes of acting on a special permit or site plan application, or any other matter for which a quorum is required, in case of an absence, inability to act, or conflict of interest. So that sense of absence in that, in the sentence, in our language, seems to imply an absence as it relates to the special permit application.
Ours does.
The way you explained before.
Yeah, ours does, because, as you say, because of the lack of the comma, it is that we, when we talked about it here, we thought that the only reason we would want to have an associate member is for the special permit application. We were not looking, I think Denny had worked on some drafts and talked to some folks, we were not looking for, in general, kind of adding somebody that hadn't been elected. So.
We were addressing the super majority and the length of time for special permits, but I also recall, and I would have to go back and double check this because it's been a bit of time, but my understanding was that town council advised that it could only be for special permits.
So I think, I think that raises an important question, because do the, do the people in Ayer have it wrong, or in Sudbury or in Harvard, where the description of the responsibilities of that associate are very different?
You may be surprised to hear this, but town councils, of which I was one and a member of the municipal town council association, have differences of opinion about reading anything. So it's not a surprise that some town would say, no, we can, we can do this, and another town says, no, you can't. I mean, because it's 351 cities and towns with Home Rule and.
So just another thing, just in context, a site plan approval, we can have a simple majority of three. So you don't have the quorum sort of issue there. And other things that we may choose to work on, let's say zoning, don't have the kind of time, legal time requirements that come with applications like site plan approval or subdivisions or special permits.
Or you have a situation, if you don't act in a certain time, it's considered, you know, approved, you know, all those kinds of things. So, you know, that's why we would be looking at it. I don't think we had a general sense, Denny, I don't think we had really talked about saying we wanted to have.
This board came up with.
Nothing beyond this. We were very focused on just in this scenario.
That's what I thought, yeah.
Yeah, we, we were thinking that, you know, there's a certain level of responsibility that comes with being an elected member, that an appointed member wouldn't have, you know, the same exposure to running for office and making the case for why they would be a good person. So you have the voters deciding, where now you would have the planning board deciding who it would be. It's just a different level of accountability in some ways, right? So having it address a particular problem that we had identified and agreed was a problem, not having, we didn't identify other things as being a problem, we didn't identify site plan approval as being a problem, or discussing other issues as being a problem. We identified potential because, we gave a few examples of things which I've been on the board, you know, over four years, and so I was in the original Thayer Nursery application, that was a very long special permit, Woolcott Woods, a very long special permit, and so there were. And so there were times that were very challenging for me during the Thayer because of family illness and so out of state. And so there, there are just things, you know, and so if I couldn't make it and someone else missed more than one meeting, then you're looking at not being able to provide a four, five vote in any case, right? Just by people not being able to be available. And that's really kind of, and then knowing too, like people have to work their work schedules around getting, being able to be here if they know they're going to miss one meeting. And that was a challenge too for some members. So that was what we were trying to address with this. It just wasn't a blanket idea that we needed an associate for everything. It was really trying to address that.
Sure, sure. I understand, I understand that and I don't disagree with any of that. I just think that it's, I think it's very interesting that, understanding that town councils can, can interpret things differently. It's, it seems to be extremely differently. You know, for, for, for one town to say, like the town of Harvard, say, says, and again, a lot of the discussion here at this planning board is focused around participation. How much or how little would an associate member participate in discussions? And that's, you know, in Harvard, they say, "The associate may attend all planning board meetings, participate in discussions, and at the designation of the chair may act as a regular member of the board on administrative matters, including but not limited to," and then there's a long list of things. And I, I think, I think it's an, it's an important discussion and I think that maybe it was a good, a good first step that town council advised the board that, that the state, the state guidance was specifically to special permit, but I think it would be.
Well, I think we started with that ourselves and we had town council check that. We didn't draft something, you know, Denny's draft or my draft wasn't, wasn't any more extensive than special permits because that's what we're worried about. And, and so going back to Cheryl, the chair's comment, you know, you don't want to have sort of random people kind of appointed to the planning board, like we could talk somebody into it, but, you know, to sort of, just sit without, you know, being elected to do that. So that's, we didn't, we sort of, when we, we had drafted it with just the language to, to special permit. So it wasn't town council telling us, oh my gosh, you can't have anything else.
Sure.
We didn't ask for anything else.
Sure, yep, I understand.
And so even if we had a town council who offered us a different opinion, this is still what my understanding is, this board would like to see, regardless of whether other towns allow it, the associate to have further participation. Like I said before, because we were targeting a particular issue that we wanted to address.
Sure. My point is that if, if an interpretation by another town council is that a wide spectrum of responsibilities for an associate member is in fact permitted by, by state law, then is it, is it up to cities and towns to just pick what portion of an associate's responsibilities that they would want to have, want to have for their particular board?
Well, it's interesting that you're talking about that because I'm at, I'm speaking next week at the England Planners Association and about cases. And one of the cases I'm talking about is on variances. And the state level says you have to have this and the town had a higher requirement. And the Supreme Court in Delaware says the statute is a floor, not a ceiling. So towns can vote, as we have here, for a narrower interpretation, a stricter interpretation than you might be allowed to do under the statute. There's no prohibition to that.
Interesting. And the way it's written, it, it, future planning boards couldn't kind of go rogue. They would be limited.
Right.
They couldn't.
Yeah.
So it's a good, good question.
Well, good, and I, I appreciate the explanation. I think that's, I think that's very helpful because it's, it's, you know, it can, it can be enlightening to, you know, as this board does on a regular basis, to find out what other towns have done. You know, that's frequently part of the support for these things going forward is to say, other towns have, have taken this step and we think that it's a, it's a good step to take. You know, I think that, I think that it's, it's a, it's a step that, that won't be taken lightly. You know, I think that people like, like this board have taken it very seriously. And I think regardless of whether an associate board member were to be voting or not voting, that simply adding a voice to a discussion at the planning board is a very important thing because the narrative of the planning board in a special permit process that gets very lengthy, voices are very important on the board. So I think it's, I think it's a step to, to really be taken in a well-informed way. So thanks, thanks for the.
Well, thank you for your thoughtful questions. Those are great. I think you've helped, you did a real service for town meeting members who are watching to understand what this is all about.
Thank you.
That's great.
Thank you, Joe. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
All right.
Did Bill send it?
I have it. I did receive it directly from Mr. Dunn, Peter Dunn.
Yeah, let me.
We can read it into the record.
Yeah, I know, I just, I think he, there was a second one.
Oh.
He probably edited. I think he sent it to Bill.
Oh.
And so I just forwarded it to you. I think he copied.
When did he send it to me?
Five minutes ago.
I was going to say, I didn't get one.
I got one at 7:17. Is that the later one?
Did you just get my email?
No, I haven't.
Should I just read it? I just read it because I can't keep up with this.
Just came this second.
Okay, I'll look. Again?
I just want to make sure.
Remember the olden days when you had to use like drums and smoke and stuff?
All right, well, Rich, since I don't have it yet, go ahead, or Bill, one of you, go ahead and read it, please.
There you go, Bill.
Fine. Dear Chair Chagaius, my name is Peter Dunn, I live at 84 Franklin Street. I'm writing you, to you regarding the proposal to have an alternate appointed member of the planning board. I'm opposed to this proposal. Planning board members have always been elected by the voters and have been accountable to these voters. An unelected voting board member would lack legitimacy and accountability. Milton is in transition with many proposals already in the mix and on the horizon. It is imperative that at this critical time, those on the planning board remain selected by and accountable to the voters. As such, I am opposed to this proposal. Thank you for your consideration. Sincerely, Peter Dunn.
Okay, thank you to Mr. Dunn for sending his comments. Anyone have, want to address the concerns or comments?
Well, I appreciate, I appreciate his comments and, and we're not talking about packing the, a planning board with a bunch of, you know, people that hadn't been elected. I will recall, of course, that the zoning board does all kinds of decisions on things and none of them are elected. So, you know, and they deal with 40Bs, which, you know, are pretty, you know, impactful on the town and those people aren't elected at all. So, but we're not really talking about, as I said, generally adding a bunch of people. We're talking about adding one person for a specific special permit, not all special permits, but a actual special permit application. And so, and as I said, I think it's basically trying to make sure that the planning board can do the job it's supposed to do.
I think one of the things that address perhaps some of the, maybe addresses it in some way, is the recent change above that was suggested to have at least four of the five members vote for the person coming in because it might be a concern if somebody might be interested in it only relative to a particular project, right, or a particular application.
And I'll be forthright, I, as you know, I was very reluctant until we, until Rich came up with that suggestion. And I was persuaded by Cheryl's story about a family illness out of state. I know there have been times that it's been hard to get to a meeting, but we've always pulled together, so I've never faced that situation. So I, I absolutely hear where Peter Dunn is coming from and I was grappling with that during our discussion and our debates. I felt like we came up with the best possible language, but I do understand his concerns. I absolutely understand his concerns.
What, what we're talking about here is adding a new subsection to the zoning bylaw. The next article that kind of runs in parallel to this is a vote to amend Chapter 11 of the general bylaws by adding a new section four in the general bylaws of the town. And it even restricts this down a little bit more.
On page two of it.
Of the handout.
Oh, okay.
To see if the town will vote to amend Chapter 11 of the general bylaws by adding a new section four. This is a completely separate vote by town meeting. It's a separate vote by the planning board as they bring a recommendation to the, to the warrant committee. So section four, the new section four would read, "The planning board associate member is hereby established per Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 48, Section 9 of the zoning Act. The associate member who shall be a resident of the town is for the purpose of acting on a special permit application in case of absence, inability to act, or conflict of interest on part of any member of the planning board, or in the event of a vacancy on the board." So it isn't a case that they just want to pick somebody new. They have to meet the standards of why that person who is already sitting there cannot respond, why they cannot take an act.
I, I understand it. And, and I'm just trying to explain where I think Peter might be coming from is that we have five members who speak all the time, we debate, we hash things out. You add another person that could shift the discussion. One person added to a discussion can shift it. Depending on how outspoken they are and how much knowledge they bring to the table or how much energy they bring to the table, it can shift it. And what I think I hear him saying is that the planning board is choosing that person as opposed to the voters. And I thought that could be an issue and I, I, you know, I was, I, I actually prefer elected, but I, my colleagues felt strongly that this was the way to go, that it was going to be very hard to get people and so on and so forth. And, and these people can sit on, in this position, up to three years. In other words, we might choose someone.
Well, you would have somebody, but as I said, they're only sitting in on the special permit application.
On special permit, so. Only one appointed.
Not every special permit, some of them are short.
Well, the fact is, we may not have one of these things which are listed here, which would be in case of absence, inability to act, conflict of interest, or vacancy. So we, you know.
But we might not know that until we're midway through something. So if we have Carberry-Walcott, a big project, we're probably going to have one. Or, you know what I mean? Because you never know when somebody might get.
Well, you can't appoint them unless you already have established.
But to that point though, if you, if you, if you know you're getting an application that will take some time, it's hard to predict when you might have somebody who might not be able to participate at the time you start it. So then would you automatically have the person at least participate in the meetings or attend the meetings even though that, they're not being asked to sit?
I would have assumed that. Well, no, because then they wouldn't be taking part.
They can't, they can't, because they, they're not meet if they're in the room, but they're not appointed.
And they're not active.
They're not, they're not members of the planning board. So when the special permit starts.
So you would need to know, like if we were about to talk about the start of one now.
Yeah.
Somebody like, I would have to say, I'm going away for a month and a half in the middle of this, I'm not going to be able to leave here, and so let's appoint that person now. Is there, you know, you kind of go for it. But if that doesn't happen and we start it and two months in, we find out that I'm going away for a month, you've missed the boat on that.
Or like if someone falls ill in their family, it's too late.
Only if it's before.
Only if you know before. And like in, with Carberry-Walcott, we were all kind of like, we didn't know if Brian was going to run again and if he would win. So we treated that like a deadline.
Right.
We treated the election cycle as a deadline.
Yeah, but I would think in that scenario, I mean, Brian may have said, you know what, I want to be part of this, so no, I'm not, we're going to have to get it done in a year, you know?
Yeah, I think he did.
And so I wouldn't think that anybody would question that, we would just move on and hope for the best.
This board has started.
Yeah.
A process and had to restart the process.
Right, yeah.
Because somebody.
But this won't help that.
This could help it if the person is picked ahead of time.
And they're, and the other person, well.
We have, we haven't had a special permit for September, October, probably won't have one in November, and I don't see one on the horizon for December. So there's four months that somebody would have been sitting at home.
Right, but the only way for that to have happened is for us to say ahead of time, let's put somebody on this because that could happen.
Yes.
And that's why, I'll be honest with you, I agree with some of the comments that were said. And so that's why I like the idea of a supermajority because at that point, it's, we really know we're going to want to enact.
Don't, don't forget that. And it might also be that somebody else who run, who decides to run says, okay, I don't have to worry so much that I might get called out of town on business, you know, a little bit out of my control or, you know, something where it's preventing them from deciding to run now. So like the, the way I see it is like the pool of candidates who decide they can run, if they understand the commitment. I know I've had people, I've taken an interest in planning board issues and I'll say, why don't you consider running? They'll say, but, but, you know, and it's the but because of the commitment, right? So.
I get a question. So I agree with all that, but so what if, what if we were to say today that yes, if this goes longer than six months, we're about to work on, it could go over, maybe, you know, maybe we're midway through the year and somebody, you know, somebody might be off the board and they might lose an election or they might not decide to come back. And so then you decide, okay, we're going to have that person join. Does that mean now there's six members taking part in the entire process? Just in case?
Yes.
Really?
Yes.
See, that I didn't know, but I mean, is.
Yeah, there's, I mean, I've, I've been, you know, on, been.
Is that how it works?
Counsel to boards where there's an associate member.
Taking part, just like.
Yeah, they're just, you know.
And then they just don't vote at the end if they don't, they're not needed.
Right, right. But, you know, but like, like any member of the public, we have citizens speak and we have people from the public.
Yeah, but this is an active role at the table.
Yeah, yeah, but most of the time, they're not as active. I mean, they're just like the associate member, you know, so.
I get it. Just curious.
I mean, even can happen now if there's an application that goes beyond election cycle.
Yeah.
It happened when I first joined the board, so I participated, so I couldn't vote in the first application.
I, I get the need or the use.
I don't think it's going to be used that often, frankly.
I don't think you're going to find it that often.
I don't think so either.
Unless I sail transatlantic.
There you go.
I mean, I think each, each time there has been a new member, there has been that issue of, we need to speed up the special permit that's before the board because they're going to lose the potential supermajority that they have. So each time a new member has come in, this board has had, they've been working on a special permit just before each one of you arrived.
I mean, what happens in terms of, at times is you have to manage the schedule around people's availability, like if somebody's missed a meeting and they're going to need to miss a next, we've had to, you know, postpone or just, you know, continue that. But the thing about that is that the applicant has to agree to that.
Has to agree to it.
Yeah, see, that's when it gets a little weird. So at the beginning of one, we just, we bring somebody on and say, there's a possibility that you're going to sail around the world and.
Transatlantic.
I was making it longer, but.
I don't want to go over.
And, and then what happens that you decide you're not going on that trip, but I miss a meeting. Are they then jumping into my spot while I'm not there in that meeting and then?
No. You've missed, you've missed one meeting.
As long as I only miss one, I guess then it's those rules, yeah.
And these new rules where you can look at the videotape.
It's one meeting.
One, one meeting.
One meeting.
Then you can participate by phone after that.
Yes, yeah, so that person can keep doing that. And that's what we're, that's how we got through that last.
That's how we got through Walcott Woods, yeah.
And also Thayer.
Which I think is appropriate to allow that board member to do that even if there is somebody sitting in the way.
But it's interesting, I was talking to somebody this evening who is a member of a planning board in a town on the South Coast, and they do not allow participation by telephone. You have to be there in person. Monday nights, two, two Monday nights a month.
Well, I do think that this is the type of commitment that you do have to plan to be here. I don't think that. I don't think that you can really, I know, I know people work and travel for work and so on and so forth, but we do, you do, it is a commitment. And, and we're all here making commitments. So you wouldn't want new members to come in and think, "Oh, I can miss meetings and..."
No, but it's inevitable.
It's inevitable, like April got called out tonight. She didn't know it until two days ago.
But there's nothing special permit tonight, so it's.
No, but I would just, so where I was going with that is, I would just, and not like it's going to happen, but I was trying to think of every scenario, right? Because that's what we're talking about. And, um, so in the scenario of I get called out and I wasn't here today, and you know what? I might have already, I'm going to watch the, the tape, and I'm going to decide I'm going to do that. And I'm going to decide, maybe I'm missing another one, I'm going to decide I'm going to call in. What I wouldn't want the group to do, and again, not like this would happen, to say, "You know what? You don't need to call in, we're going to have that person fill in because they've been here too." I mean, I, as the board member, I think I have the right to say, "No." Because that's where I would agree with Peter. I'm the, I got elected.
Right.
Right? I went through that process, and so people want to make sure that I vote the way I said I was going to vote. I wouldn't want somebody else to jump in and say, "You know what? Don't call in."
That makes sense. And again, that would be, um, well, I would think that if the, you, that you, let's say it's you.
Yeah.
You would tell the chair.
Right.
The chair, "I want to call in."
Yeah, and you make accommodations.
And if the chair didn't agree to that, I would, I would find that surprising, but, you know.
Right, right.
It kind of makes the, um, you know, team playing of the planning board not work out very well if we were sort of sabotaging somebody.
No, it'd be awful, right?
Right.
Right. No, but in the interest of beating that, just that.
So, um, the article has been submitted, but if the board wanted to consider any amendments to the article, that could still be done. So I just.
I'm good with it.
I think it'll be interesting for town meeting to.
Yeah.
Take it on.
And do they need a, a majority vote or a super majority vote on this one?
Uh, for zoning, it would be a super majority vote.
Two-thirds.
Two-thirds.
Yeah, two-thirds vote.
Two-thirds would have to vote for this.
Not for the general bylaw.
Not for the general bylaw, but for the, but for this.
The first page is a two-thirds.
Okay, the first page is two-thirds.
The second page, general bylaw, is just a majority.
Okay.
And the third one is a zoning bylaw.
Yeah, the third one's a two-thirds.
Two-thirds, okay.
Okay. So is everybody.
Want to make a motion?
Sure.
To approve the article?
First, do you want to close the, um?
Oh, close, we're having a public hearing.
All right, is anybody else, before we close the public hearing?
Do we want to think about it?
For this one?
Just, yeah.
Yeah.
I was going to say for these two.
For the two?
No? Oh, you want to leave Wetlands open?
No.
Oh.
I, I, you can do that for, for these two, just as long as you make the motion saying that you've got two motions.
Yeah.
Because you have to give a recommendation.
On both.
Yeah.
I just.
All right, so do you prefer to have it as two motions or as one?
One is fine.
Okay.
I'll take the wording.
Okay. So, uh, before that, uh, before the motion, is there?
This one's 51%.
Anyone in the audience, before we close the public hearing? No? Okay. Then Kathleen, I'll take a motion.
So I would move that the planning board vote.
Can you move to close the public hearing first?
Move to close the public hearing, sorry.
Is there a second to close the public hearing?
Yeah.
Danny, okay. All those in favor of closing the public hearing?
Aye.
Okay, now.
Okay. Um, I move that the, uh, planning board vote to approve or submission to town meeting two articles. First, the, um, amendment of Chapter 10 of the gen, sorry, not, that's just, sorry, da-da-da-da.
Vote to amend Chapter 10.
The 10 of the general bylaws, known as the zoning bylaw, by adding a new subsection E to section Roman numeral eight, to be entitled Planning Board Associate Member. And second, to approve the, uh, the submission of a vote to amend Chapter 11 of the general bylaws by adding a new Section 4 regarding planning board associate members. How's that one?
Okay.
That's my motion.
Second? Please leave it.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then our second motion, we have on the Wetlands regulation. So we have to close, have a motion to close the public hearing on the Wetlands regulation?
Oh, hi, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then a motion to submit to town meeting for approval of vote to amend Chapter 10 of the general bylaws by striking section Roman numeral 4B, Wetlands Regulations in its entirety.
I'm in favor.
Okay, second, Danny?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kathleen.
Thanks, this is stress.
Okay, um.
Thank you, thank you.
We now have the public hearing for the revisions to the planning board's rules and regulations. We've discussed these as, um, in the past. Thank you Kathleen for drafting them and Bill for, um, guidance. The, um, a lot of this has to do with very straightforward things that, um, include how many copies need to be submitted, on what type of.
On linen.
Paper, I was going to say, but, um, and then, um, things relative to locations. The, um, measurements providing locations of all fire and police alarms.
No, I was taking out the, um, do you have handholds?
The handholds, yeah.
Because they don't use those anymore.
I was looking for that language, but, okay.
And then the other one was on the, um, the pipes for subdivision roads.
Material of pipes, right?
Was required to be clay, which are not moving so much. So these were.
Clay and metal were using plastic.
Yeah, so.
And the only difference was the plastic, there's a change in the plastic that, um, DPW Director Asta had put in, which is why there's an extra word from what you wrote.
Oh, okay.
Um, it's, it's, it's in the, it's in the legal ad, and I'm sorry, but I only took the, uh, the zoning bylaws and not the regulation.
I, I have a copy here if anybody needs it, um, so.
That's great that you looked at that. So really, it was only just updating, um, the, it's sort of modernizing the language and to sort of say that we didn't have to require linen, which I think is hard to get.
Do you want to, since you drafted them, I have a copy here, you want to review?
And the only other thing is, um, that maybe is considered to be slightly more substantive was that, um, I amended the, we amended the language on utilities for street lighting to talk about, um, the fact that they needed to be in accordance with the then-current International Dark Sky Association guidelines or to design standards deemed acceptable to the board. And that was really because we didn't have any, the kind I said, dark sky compliant, like it's supposed to mean. So I thought it was best to put in the international guidelines, dark side. I meant, then you could just do whatever you wanted, but it would provide some guidance to somebody to know actually what they should be looking at.
And as we discussed, this is, felt not to be at all in any way controversial kinds of changes. There are, however, other items that at some point we would like to take up, considering like roadway widths and sidewalks, things that we are asked to grant variances on, or not variances, but relief for. And so, um, waive our requirement for, and, um, those, we've discussed, to take at another time. But this being a first step, at least in making corrections of getting, uh, somewhat.
Allowing for other things besides clay, as are pipe materials.
We went for the low-hanging fruit, cleaned things up.
Okay, so is there anyone in the audience who would like to, um, address the board regarding these changes to our rules and regulations? Okay. Seeing none, is there any other discussion? All right, this does not go to town meeting? This is a vote of, that we make?
Just this board.
Just this board, we do hold a public hearing, um, but after, um, after that, it's, the process is complete.
Can I just review them really quick?
Yeah, oh, sure, sorry, yep.
I am, I'm familiar with these, but.
Yep, yep.
Okay, does anybody want to make a motion?
You can.
First we'll close the public hearing, Danny?
We've got to get ready for this, okay? Um, you're going to have to coach me.
No.
Oh, I moved to close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye, excellent.
Okay. So I move to approve the updates to the rules and regulations as described in.
Submitted to the board.
As submitted to the board.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Very good, yes, we got that done.
No more linen.
Thank you for the coaching.
Good.
Stalking that company just dropped like a rock.
We were.
Um, all right, so we have new business and we have old business. New business is a front fence, front fence discussion. I guess that could be called front yard, but, and then old business is, um, potential May town meeting zoning articles and particularly Milton Village overlay. On the new business one, uh, I think we can start this conversation tonight and then decide about, um, what we might want to do next with it. This is actually something pretty interesting because, um, I, I went for a walk on Canton Avenue, um, on a beautiful Sunday, up to the Eustace Estate, and I was walking along a sidewalk, which is, of course, on one side, and you have to kind of jump across the street a couple of times to keep going because it's not continuous on one side.
Right, it's very dangerous.
Yes, and, but I also noticed a lot of fences, and I thought, these fences are right next to the sidewalk, and it's supposed to be a scenic way.
Mm-hmm.
And you think a scenic way, there's stone walls, and there's trees, and there's landscaping, but there's these stretch of fences. And I thought to myself that this is maybe something we should look at. Two days later, Bill got an email from a resident, or he got a phone call, and then he asked the, the resident to follow that phone call up with an email. So we have a copy of that email.
As recently discussed, I've observed more and more homeowners here in Milton opting to install six-to-eight-foot private fence between their building line and the street. It's my opinion that these structures, regardless of their composition, are ugly and greatly deterred from the beauty of our neighborhood. I'm attaching information relative to the town of West Hartford's regulations pertaining to fences. It would behoove the town of Milton to adopt similar regulations.
So I, I took some photos.
Oh, good.
And I have some addresses that Bill has, and not that we want to call out residents, but if, if you're interested in the addresses, board members, we can discuss it, but.
So we're going to look at some fences without.
Yeah, can you?
Do we have, is this a link? This email you sent us up, how did it matter?
I did not send you the email.
The link, do we, do we need to look at that, or do you have that?
Um.
It's probably the West Hartford's.
I have.
It's a picture.
You're going to see it in a minute.
Oh, oh, that's what it is?
There you go.
Can you make that full size, though? And do we need to?
Yes, it was West Hartford's guidelines.
Yeah.
But it's just a picture, huh?
Yeah, I think he took a picture of the screenshot.
Oh, okay.
You can't get that bigger?
I can, I can, I can.
Oh, you can, okay, all right. So I asked Bill, I said, "Is it truly that the property line is right at the edge of that sidewalk?" Um, and I don't know, he said each property could be a little different, but.
The odds are good that they're not. Um, you know, you do a layout of a street, it's taking usually wider than what the street's built out to, you know, the property line could be anywhere.
Right, so the thing is, is that if you walk, um, you know, here, you, actually, if, if you're walking with someone or somewhere where in the wheelchair pushing a carriage or whatever they were doing, this, you can get by, but other places down the street, you can't. But you can see, it goes from one property here right to the next one here, and, um, and Bill, if you just want to, you don't have to. I, I did have a couple, too, which are, um, show the other side of the street. So you can see on this side, there's no sidewalk on the, so this is heading, um, towards.
Canton?
Yes, thank you.
That area.
I wondered that, can I, is there a reason why we don't have sidewalks on those streets? Both sides?
So here's another one, and you can, I mean, the phone has a little bit kind of, you know, in terms of the angle, but they're still pretty long distances. So on the one side, you know, there's hedge, there's grass, there's, and then on this side, again, these are like all the way, and these sidewalks aren't very wide.
Yeah.
We didn't, we only built sidewalks on one side, and many of the streets of this, we didn't put sidewalks.
Oh.
And now here, um, the fence is just behind the stone, um, but you can see here, now they're plenty, I mean, I was here, kind of rainy and midday, so it's not the busiest day, but, you know, walking around this, too, you know, it, it kind of gives you this sort of not very pleasant pedestrian experience. The other side, you know, it's got the landscape. Another one with a little wall, and there's a little bit more space, but not a lot.
You get squeezed by the hydrant, you get squeezed by the pole.
Right. And that's a busy street.
And if it snows, forget it, you're not going to be walking on the sidewalk, there's nowhere for the snow to go.
Yeah.
And that's just with, another, like across the street, where you've got a little bit of stone, you have a little bit of landscape.
The question is, is the stone wall really the boundary? We don't know, which is why we make a requirement of a proposal like this, that they have to give us a plot plan, and on the plot plan, it usually identifies the wall. Certain places, the road layout is correct, and certain other places, the road layout is, is not correct. The only way to do that is to require a plot plan from each homeowner as he does his or her project.
Yeah, but you wouldn't want a plot plan, you need a survey. Plot plan just shows that the property's on the planet Earth. Those guys just drive by and take a picture and said, "Okay, fine, here I am," but they're not dimensional, they don't check the actual lines.
Right, a lot of times, we don't know that, um, is the wall on the property line? We need, that's why you need the survey.
Yeah, survey, yeah.
So do we not have any regulations at all for fences?
Do we have?
We have them on corners, period.
Do we have design guidelines?
We have, we require a building permit if the fence is over six feet tall, and that's because of wind load. If somebody were to come in and say, "I want to put up a 10-foot chainlink fence," the building commission is most likely going to say, "Go ahead," because there's no wind load on a chainlink fence. If you come in and say, "I want to put up that fence and make it 10 feet tall," he's going to require a building permit because there is wind load on that fence.
Huh, interesting.
Yeah, that's something to research, to sort of see. Because, you know, lots of towns have those, I mean, they're structures, no matter what the height is.
Yeah.
We say that a fence is a structure over six feet.
What's... Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Other towns have been asking the same question. Somebody asked the question on the 23rd. What types of restrictions do communities have on walls, fences, or combinations of fences on top of walls?
Yeah.
Oh, interesting.
They didn't get any answers yet. So, I'm expecting Friday might be the day.
But the West Hartford did have some, you have that up here, right?
Yeah.
What was the law on corners?
Four feet.
Oh, right.
It can't be over four feet?
Four feet, you have to be able to see by it.
Is that just fences, or does that... Because you notice, even if the fence wasn't there, there'd be a hedge that was tensing down.
Should be hedges, too. We have a fence viewer in our...
Oh, yeah, that's an old, you know, colonial...
They're not over four feet on a corner.
No, 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 it's an appointed person.
They appoint the fence viewer.
Oh, a person, oh, I thought it was that big...
Have to drive around it to the fence. This is from West Hartford.
Sorry, just to clarify, so you said a fence or a hedge can't be over four feet on a corner.
On a corner, can't take and block up a corner.
Colonial, almost.
Can't block up a corner.
Oh, wow.
Before we look at this, there's a picture of Bill, I guess maybe you didn't put up because it wasn't a fence. But, I did, when I took these pictures, I did go on one of the side streets, and the shrubs were completely had overgrown the sidewalk. And so, no one could actually walk on that sidewalk.
Yeah.
And when we're... It's just something, I don't know, that we can address in zoning, but somehow, it seems like if we're trying to encourage walking and biking, we have to have safe sidewalks.
Can you say that again, what was overgrown?
Shrubs, completely.
Overgrown the sidewalks, yeah.
I didn't see that picture in what you sent me, but you're right. And I have seen that, I have seen the DPW actually go out, and they will issue a notice to the landowner that your bushes are extending out over. You either need to cut them back, or we will cut them back.
Okay.
And you truly don't want the DPW to go in and cut them back for you. There's... They won't do it as nicely as you will do your own. They will actually put it back. You'll probably do it a lot nicer, it'd be nicer to your bushes.
When does that happen, like?
Usually when somebody complains.
And so, what you just said...
You'd have to complain to the DPW.
You can't actually block us up?
The only time I've really seen it come back, I've seen them do it in the wintertime because they can't get the plow by. I've seen it when people have taken and made a call, and they've asked them several different times that the DPW will go out and they'll...
But is that actually a law that you can't uncroach onto a sidewalk like that?
Well, you're in a public way.
There is a state law that when a tree goes over a property line...
Yep.
So, like, in my neighborhood, if a tree, if a tree branches grew over onto my property, then I'm obligated to take care of them for safety, or for other reasons. Even roots, if they grew under my property and caused damage to my house, well, that was my responsibility to take care of them. I can't go to my neighbor and say, "Your tree's roots have damaged my whatever," or "Your branch fell on my dog's head, and now I want you to pay the vet bills." You can't do that because you are still... As soon as it goes onto your property, you're responsible to take it off. So, I would imagine, as soon as it goes onto the town's property, then the town's responsible.
Be careful, though, because you can't, if you kill somebody's tree by doing that, it's your fault, too.
Well, if it's...
Yeah, you can't kill the tree.
You can't kill the tree.
Right.
You're right.
So, you gotta be careful.
You have to be careful, that's right, that's right.
So, this one in Hartford says that no structure, yeah, between the building line and the street line?
So, they have...
Kill my trees.
So, they do have this provision that you're not allowed to have them exceeding seven feet.
Well, you can, not exceed...
Keep going down?
Yeah, if it's a side yard or a rear yard.
Right.
But along the street, it's supposed to, can't be any higher than four.
Over four.
Four feet along the street, right.
Not more than half of it can be solid.
Yeah.
So, is this something that the board feels as if we want... Like I said, I thought this could be an introduction tonight. There is a sample here, we could do some more research. Bill started it, but he saw something already on the list, the planners' list. So, is this something that we think, we've had a resident, you know, request that we take a look at it? I, myself, saw a need or an interest in it myself, particularly with Canton Ave being a scenic way.
I think so.
You know...
Yeah, it kind of seems like, why would you be able to do that on a scenic way?
He didn't identify Canton Ave necessarily, but when Bill sent this to me, I said, I was just out on Canton Ave, and he said, well, that's what he was talking about.
I kind of think it's part of a bigger discussion, which is, it has to do with design guidelines. We don't have design guidelines. And I think our planning board spends a lot of time dealing with design. And like, even on Carberry and stuff, it was really good, we have an architect here, but still, it would be really great if we had a design review committee in town, and they were to take on these type of topics. And I think there was a bylaw that was proposed a number of years ago. Was it Owen that was before you?
Aaron.
Was it Aaron? Well, anyway, I was talking with someone on the Historic Commission about this. And I think it would be really great if we could... I would have loved to have heard from a design review committee on Carberry Walcott, for instance, because I just feel like the learning curve is so steep on this board, that first year or two, that it'd be so great to have somebody else come in and really give us some... I love it when the shade tree committee comes in, I love it when the Historic Commission comes in. I would love a design review committee.
I'm not sure on a fence, what would trigger it, like if...
Yeah.
Because some fences are nicer than others. Like, when you were showing the fences, you know, the nicer fences with the opening at the top, and it had some historic charm to them, I had a different reaction to than the solid ones. But then again, that's just my taste. And is it right for me to impose my taste on someone who says, "I want a fence because I want my dogs and kids to be safe," and so on and so forth? So, it's a, you know, it's a...
It's not really a question, I think, of having a fence or not having a fence. It's having a fence of a certain height, right on the property line, right on the sidewalk, and especially on a scenic way.
Yeah, I mean, I'm surprised that it's six feet. You know, that seems awfully high, that you can just go ahead and do that.
They were all taller than me.
Yeah, I mean, then you can just go ahead and do that, and just have to get a, you know, a building... Well, you could go up to six feet and don't need a building permit at all?
I don't need a permit for six feet.
Yeah, I mean...
Look at, drive some other towns, though. Drive Brookline. They've got them, they're right up on the property line.
Yeah, tall, too.
Drive Lexington, there's a certain area.
So, I guess what we could do is...
Heavily traveled roads.
Well, that's the thing, heavily traveled roads and a sense of noise absorption and safety.
So, I guess what we could, if we decided we wanted to have some conversation about this, maybe we could see, get a general sense from, you know, having a public meeting and see what people's feeling.
We'll see what some other communities have by way of fence bylaws.
Yeah. It's just, like I said, the beginning of a conversation. And maybe, Bill, you, we can see what some other communities have. If anyone's watching and knows of other places that they think it's as much, maybe, of concern. One thing we might start with is just looking at, I think we talked about one time, too, looking at our scenic road bylaw. And maybe this is a good place to tackle this one, at least to start with. And then, you know, if it needs to go beyond that. You know, maybe it's in a place where the sidewalks are narrow, and they're right on the curb, you know, if there's no sidewalk. I don't know, you know, it changes, maybe it changes. Alright, so, general interest. We don't have to pick a date or time in which, you know, we would advance anything, okay?
Yep.
Alright, so, we'll move on to...
I'm sorry, what did we, you get to?
Well, I guess my thought was that Bill would do a little more research on other things, and then, we can see maybe what, some feedback from some of the other planners, what they've done it, or if they've not, what the concerns are. And then, my other thought was to take a look at the scenic road bylaw, because we talked about that when we had issues with trees taken down in, you know, in the public right-of-way on the scenic way, right? And I think at the time, we said, well, maybe we should be, we should look at that bylaw. So, what I suggested was, maybe we look at this in the context to start with, on a scenic road. As far as when we do that, I guess, I didn't necessarily think we needed to necessarily have a high, put an immediate priority on it, but you know how we have our list of zoning? Is to put those, to put that on our list with this, with scenic.
I mean, this...
Sure, I'm happy to talk about it.
Yeah, same here. No, I was just gonna say, I mean, just for clarity, I mean, this is, once we did at some point, go through an open town, you know, open meeting and gets passed and all that, it's then moving forward, so...
Oh, yeah, nothing's retroactive on it, it didn't change anything, no. And again, it'd be interesting to see what other members in the community think, you know? One of the things I will say, though, is if you are a pedestrian, and let's just say you're walking with a child or something, and if anything happens, somebody gets off of that roadway a little bit, you're between the road and the fence. So, from a safety point of view, it changes your dynamic of being a pedestrian on that street. And in the winter, when there's snow, the snow is going to go on that sidewalk. There's no place else up against a six- or seven-foot-high fence for that snow to go. So, you will not have a sidewalk on Canton Avenue. Canton Avenue, when you get this way closer, is how kids get to the high school and how they get to the middle school. And I know my kids walk Canton Ave to both of those, and there's oftentimes, and even Canton Ave at this end, the sidewalk's not very clear. And you put fences on it, and all bets are off. So, you know, when we're thinking about how much traffic we have, part of getting people out of their cars, in part, is having it safe to walk and bike.
Right.
DPW has it, right up to the property line.
Yeah, we could probably do a survey of more. I mean, mine was not a scientific survey by any means, you know?
No, I've written off, and I remember, that was a tough street to walk down in the winter.
Really tall fences there, too, yeah.
Well, and the sidewalk is right on the street there, too.
Yes.
And the cars whizzing by even faster than they are on Canton Avenue.
Fifty miles an hour, yeah.
Definitely. Alright, so, we have now, what I'd like to do is go through the, begin the language review of the Milton Village overlay. And as we look at the language, if there are things that we want to understand better or go back to, you know, look at presentation materials or what have you, we can. But, so, we all have, Bill, we all have a copy of...
Yes.
Right? This is, the underlying document of this is the MPIC's recommended language for the overlay, and the edits to this are Kathleen's. There are things, comments that she left in that remain from the MPIC that the committee didn't fully resolve. And it's just things that we thought the planning board might want to discuss.
To make sure that we're all on the same one, if you go up to the very top line, all the way on the right, KOD edits 92519.
Yep. Everybody have that?
Yep.
And Bill, you have it up behind us for people to see?
I just wanted, before we got into this discussion, to sort of, for the members of the public and others, to sort of explain a little bit about what an overlay's supposed to be doing. Because I think there's been a lot of, you know, anxiety about the fact that we're sort of, you know, building a project tomorrow on this property. And it was interesting, when I was looking it up, it was, there was a great story about the reason why it's called overlay. Because what they used to do was you would adopt zoning for a particular area, and it was on tissue, and it would be laid on top of the zoning map. So, it was an overlay, because you have the existing zoning map like this, and then you would have a tissue, a transparent sheet, on top, and that would be the overlay district. And I kind of remembered in the olden days of going back to looking at zoning maps in towns when you were trying to figure something out, and you'd have to go there in person because you couldn't get anything online, and la-la-la. And there would be the zoning book with like sheets on top of it that would show where the overlay district was. And so, but as a visual, I thought it was important to have people remember, because we had lots of talk about this last time, about the fact that it's on top of the existing zoning. So, the existing zoning in East Milton is already, is still there. The overlay district doesn't wipe that out. So, it's, there's the commercial regulations that are still there on that site. And so, this is just, as I said, a tissue sort of on top of it. It coexists with what we already have as the underlying zoning. And so, I thought that was important for people to remember that the existing zoning's still there. And that this overlay district allows a developer to say, okay, fine, you know, I want to take a look at this, and if I'm gonna use the overlay, I'm gonna maybe get some more flexibility, or provide some different benefits to the town that I might not otherwise get, if under the existing zoning.
So, Kathleen, I'd like to add to that. And just, again, for people who might be watching who aren't familiar, I gave a presentation for the Master Plan Implementation Committee on September 23rd, and that presentation is on the town's website in the Master Plan section. And one of the slides in there has, I thought, there was an interesting comparison that I found in the MAPC's Mixed Use Zoning, a Citizens Guide document, which is also online, if anyone wanted to look it up. And they say that, what you said about the overlay, but also, some people have asked, "Why don't you change the underlying zoning rather than having an overlay?" And one of the things about that, that they, that that document points out is that when you change the underlying zoning, you're allowing a mix of uses by right, but you're only enabling it, you're not requiring it. Whereas this overlay, and overlay can actually require the mix of uses, which is what this overlay does. And not only that, if you change the underlying, it wouldn't change the control mechanism. It wouldn't put in a special permit process, which the overlay district does. And so, that control process, that special permit process affords a lot more protection for the neighborhood than the underlying zoning does. Which I think is something that's really important for people to understand. Because the special, the planning board has an opportunity to set all kinds of conditions like we normally do. There's a lot more design guidelines in the draft that we have. But also, even with all of that, the planning board can still say no to the special permit. So, it's not, when you have the underlying zoning, that's a matter of right.
Yeah, you can't say...
You can't say no to the underlying zoning. And it goes to Joe Prandak for a building permit, who would send it to us for a site plan approval, but not a special permit. And so, that's just kind of the, again, kind of comparing the underlying zoning and the overlay.
On what grounds can the planning board say no? On what grounds? Don't they need...
Well, if you adopt the overlay district?
Yeah, so if you adopt the overlay, and someone comes in and they want to build something, and a planning board member thinks it's inappropriate, or they don't like the style of it.
Well, you just have to justify your reasons for saying no. Like, you have to say no, when the zoning board says no, you gotta give a reason for why you're saying no, you just can't, just can't say no. You have to sort of, you know, you have to outline the reasons. And since, most of the time, you know, as Cheryl's pointed out a number of times, is that, you know, you do overlay districts to protect a certain geographical, historical, environmental characteristics. And so, the language that, you know, that's been put into this draft is pretty much talking about the special characteristics of East Milton Village and the historic, you know, the, I mean, Milton Village, you know, the historic, you know, area, the, you know, longtime commercial development that has been there, you know, all that sort of stuff, and talks about it as a really special place. And so, it sort of establishes a reason for why you have an overlay district. Because you've got this special area that doesn't apply to the rest of the town. And so...
This is very much tailored for this district, this particular district.
And I think the other thing, too, is important to remember, is that it's not requiring a developer to show up. And we don't actually have, I mean, sometimes when people challenge overlay districts, they do it on the basis of like, oh, you know, Fritz and Mary came in here, and they gave you this big, huge song and dance about what they're gonna build, and now you've drafted your zoning to allow that project. We don't have that. We don't have a developer sitting here saying, oh, if you, you know, just cook this up a certain way, and, you know, we'll be good to go. The zoning, the overlay sits there, nothing happens. It doesn't change, your house is still your house, it doesn't affect you at all. You know, until somebody, you know, actually wants to use it. So, you know, it doesn't force you to do something.
So, if somebody wanted to put in, in one of the properties that is not currently historic, somebody wanted to put something in that was modern there, but the vision of the town and the vision of the neighborhood has been, we're steering toward historic to match up. we're steering toward historic to match up other historic elements. Is that, is that cause to say, no, we don't want your modern-looking approach?
Well, if it doesn't meet the design standards.
Doesn't meet the design standards.
Standards are actual requirements.
They just say no.
Yeah.
So the thing about the standards.
So they'd have to go back to what they could do under the underlying zoning, which might not allow what they want.
So the difference between standards and guidelines is standards are required. So that's why, when looking at these standards, I usually am cautious as an architect, knowing what it's like to have to design to certain things that can be difficult to do. And then if you can't meet it, then you can't meet it. But it is why sometimes it's allowed that the planning board can waive a requirement because it gives the planning board a little flexibility to, you know, if they see a particular design that they think meets the intent of the guideline, that they can approve it even though there might be one thing in the guideline that's a little different. If it says 10 feet and it's eight, or 20 feet and it's 18, you know, that would, otherwise, while it's a guideline, it's one thing. But when it's a standard, it's a standard. You know what I mean?
It's a standard that you can waive?
So it depends on the language. And we can go through the language in here, okay?
Okay.
So the first part of this, the, the first sentence really outlines that it can be applied to a site of no less than 3,500 square feet of land. So that's the, anything smaller than that, this doesn't apply. It's requiring a mix of residential and business use in a special permit process. So that's in that first sentence. It's saying that it can be, and this is standard, we've had this kind of language in other zoning. The lot, so in quotation marks, can be a single lot or adjacent lots in common ownership. And then it describes the boundaries of the district, which has, has been up on a map. And if you want to look at the map again, I don't know if you have the presentation, Bill, but the map that those words describe is the business district in Milton Village, but not the portion that's central, considered Central Ave. I have it somewhere.
How, how, how big are those lots on High Street? High Street's included in this, right?
Mm-hmm.
The ones.
Every single one.
There's a lot of different sizes. If you're thinking about the end that's closest to Elliot Street, those houses are all, none of them are 3,500 square feet. The 3,500 square feet allows the Swift Hat Building and the other building in common ownership with it to fall into the.
So this is for that?
Well, this will, this will allow the 3,500. Bill, did you get the map? Here's the map, so.
Does the map have the footage?
Um, I think we had, maybe, I'll check, trying to see in the.
I can show you here, which, see these, all of these lots?
Yeah, yeah.
But this is bigger, right? This is where the dental office is. This is a house. And then this is where the law office is. This is Five Canton Ave, which was the funeral home. And then these are all small ones here.
Okay, so I'm sorry, so this is at the top of the hill, right?
Yeah.
And then that's toward Dorchester.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, so this is the funeral?
This is, this one. This is where the law office is.
Laws, okay.
This is where there's a couple of single families, and there's a dental office, I think, and then there's.
Business.
Medical office and a residence, and then these are business. This is the citizens' kiosk, and this is the Bank of America. These are all, I think mostly two families. These are all very small lots. This is dental office. This is a single family, and a bigger lot. So it's a combination up here, some do and some don't apply.
So if I were to look at like a GPS map, would I get a sense of square footage?
You could go to the town's GIS website, and you can look at each one and see. We probably have a chart on the website. I don't have the chart in this presentation, though.
I'm just trying to look at it.
Where are these on the website?
They're on the planning board page under Master Plan.
But Bill, you could go to, if you wanted to look at site sizes on High Street, you could just go to the town GIS. Pick a couple, give Danny an idea which ones are 3,500 and what aren't.
Which, which department do you find the GIS on?
It's under Quick Links on the homepage.
I'm just trying to picture that, the pressure on assemblage and think of a way to.
Now I'm getting getty stuff first.
There are three parcels that are in common ownership next to the citizens' kiosk, the Ferrucci family. Those have been in common ownership for quite some time. The ones where, the Elliot end of High Street, those, mostly two families, those are all in separate ownership, I think, Bill? Mostly separate ownership or all separate ownership?
I'm sorry?
The residential, the two families at the end of High Street towards Elliot?
Those are.
Mostly separate ownership?
Yep. They are a separate ownership. Here's a two-family.
Yeah.
On High Street. This one is.
I don't know if you can see that, people.
This is .08 square feet, so acres.
So what is 3,500, what is that a?
45,360 square feet.
It's an acre.
45,000 is an acre, okay.
So 3,500 divided by, or .08 times that. My recollection is that none of these qualify on their own. That was one of the things that we looked at with MAPC.
I don't mean to slow you down, I just wanted to have a better.
I just want, Bill, do you mind just moving this a little bit to see the Swift Hat?
3,500 is .0803. So this, that's a 3,500 square foot lot on High Street.
This one is?
That one there.
Okay.
So if you were to take, these, these guys here, these absolutely positively are not. This is a parcel. This one actually just went to the zoning board of appeals. This is a two-unit, two parking space.
Oh, that was that new condo we approved, right?
So Danny, I will say that the MPIC.
That's about 1,500, because that's.
There was a lot of concern about allowing a reuse opportunity for the Swift Hat, so that there could be the potential to preserve it. So we, it was that committee's intent to have this zoning be of a size that it could apply. And I'm pretty sure if you combine these two together, this is 3,500, the existing Swift Hat and then the white building.
This one is .07. And then add in the Swift Hat house, which is.
That thing's tiny.
Yeah, he's like 800, he's zero.
Less than 1,000 square foot size.
It's .018, so he's like 800 square feet.
And then, so the, these, this is in common ownership already. And then these are four individual owners.
If I do.
That's one parcel that goes all the way.
This one. I'm pushing the wrong button, that's why.
You got to get to.
This one. This one. Come on. This one and this one.
That's common ownership.
That's common ownership already.
But these four are all separate owners.
Yep. This one and this one, these two are common ownership.
All right, well, that gives you an idea, Danny?
Yeah.
Could both of those common ownerships, one person buy both?
Well, we can't do anything to prevent people from buying and selling, right? But this.
Would they be able to build one giant?
This is Citizens Bank, right? That owns that. This is.
This one here.
This is single family, and this is single family, and this is single family. And this is dental, right?
Yep.
So, but theoretically, somebody could buy that outlined yellow box and then the common ownership below it. And if one person was to buy all that, they could build one.
Yeah, if they could buy it all, yeah.
And they could go up four stories.
They can go four stories from Adams and three from High, but the.
Under the current zoning?
Under the current zoning, they can go three stories and 45 feet or five stories and 65 feet by special permit under the current zoning. The proposed zoning, the, the final version, says that you can go four stories only with a bonus, and then we can get into the bonuses. But three stories without a bonus? In any case, only three stories on High and 35 feet. So we're dropping the allowed height.
Are we going in order, or can I ask you a question about the bonus? Do you want to wait?
I kind of wanted to go through by order, if that's okay?
Yep.
Yeah, okay. But that, this in terms of addressing lot size, right? Question, okay. So remember, the larger lots allowed 88 Wharf to be built and allowed Two Adams to be permitted. That was under a different overlay. So there is already an overlay, but you have to have a two-acre site, 8,000 square feet in order to apply for it. That overlay allowed 65 feet for, you know, for 88 Wharf.
But at the same time, that overlay had no.
No affordable housing requirement. Okay, so that's.
They have two acres.
I, I'm still concerned with assemblage, but keep going.
All right, so make a note, I guess, about, we can make note about things that we want to come back and talk about.
But how can you, how can you stop somebody from assembling?
Well, yeah, but some, for instance, some ways that you word things encourages more pressure on assemblage, where like if you had, let's just say, instead of 3,500, you had acre zoning, it would be, a lot less would be touched in here.
Well, you know, the idea of adopting an overlay bylaw that wouldn't ever be used doesn't make much sense.
Well, I agree with you, but I also agree that adopting it for the Swift Hat house is, is, just because it works for one property doesn't mean it's great for all the properties.
But it doesn't. It works for, it works for that, but it also works for the other properties that are on High Street that are on Adams Street.
It works for.
We didn't do it so that it'd only work for one property. We did it so it could work for the district.
Well, we had some homeowners come in last time who are under a great deal of pressure for assemblage. So I think some of the households don't feel that it's working for them. And that's what I'm, I don't know the answer, but I, I heard the question.
I mean, the fact that you're sitting in a real estate market where, you know, somebody says, oh, well, this would be great, and I'll pay you 18 times what you probably paid for your house. I mean, that's going to happen anytime somebody has a project. I don't know that the zoning, you know, overlay district makes that more or less legally.
Well, I mean, we have situations where somebody pays a lot of money for a piece of land, subdivides it because they can.
Yeah.
Or they tear it down and build a monster-sized house because there's really not a lot that regulates the size of a house that can be built in some, especially double As.
Yeah.
But, so there's, there's pressures, right? I mean, there's, there's pressures on real estate just by Milton being really a very desirable real estate market. But the, the idea is that you give an investment opportunity, you know, that's an alternative to an all-commercial use. People can, right now, somebody could come build next to those single families with a lot less control than what we're putting here now. And people say, okay, well, then nobody's going to do that because they can't meet the parking. But that's also, like, you have, we know properties have changed hands. Now, you know people are paying taxes on it, and if they're not getting any revenue in from the property that they own, they're going to eventually decide they're going to need to do something with it. How are they paying their insurance and their taxes even on it? So they're going to need to get some money out of that property, right? Otherwise, why, why would they own it? So some of these, just because they've been sitting there for a long time, doesn't mean they'll always sit there. And the idea is to be more proactive and to say, you know what? We don't really want another gas station that can go in there as a right right now. We'd rather not. We'd rather have something which has less traffic impact, actually, to put residential in there and to give us maybe a coffee shop. So there's nothing, so what it's allowing is a different set of uses than what is allowed under the commercial zoning, and puts more process and control and review into it than what the existing zoning has. So it's like you're, you know, I would be more concerned about what, if somebody came in to assemble something and decided, okay, I can, I can put in a parking garage close to the trolley because there's, underlying zoning allows me to build a commercial building, including a parking garage. And then they could say, well, I'm going to meet the needs of the commuters. I'm going to meet the needs of the commuters who want to take the trolley because they're really getting tired of getting caught in traffic on Adams Street. And I'll park here and I'll take the trolley from here. Somebody might see that as an opportunity. So it's, you know, it's giving the, the people who are making decisions about their property and other alternative, an alternative that I think many people think would be more attractive than what some of the underlying zoning options are.
Yeah, when you have underlying zoning, you're back to having, you know, a chocolate factory.
The chocolate factory is lovely.
Yeah, but you could actually make chocolate in it. You'd be allowed to as a commercial use.
I mean, there's all sorts of things that could go in. I mean, you can put a welding shop in, you can put a woodworking shop in, you can put car repair, used car lot. I mean, the underlying zoning allows all those things without any special permitting required. So one of the things that we talked about is that some of those things are not allowed in the overlay, including the motor vehicle, sales and repair shops, gas station.
17 High was the carpenter's shop. That was what the building was built for.
I'm, I'm sure there was things like cobblers and all sorts when it was all built out originally. It was building trades for sure. There was lumberyard, et cetera.
Well, as I said, a friend of mine's grandfather had a boatyard down in the Landing. Manufactured boats.
The other thing is, some of these buildings are just, you know, the existing historic buildings, ones that are, have been commercial, like the one that is, we call the Masonic Building. You know, there would have been a store up in the big space. There's, there's no longer a store there. I don't know if it's leased.
The house at 85 was a photography studio twice. It has been commercial over time, and now it's residential. The buildings have all been moved. I mean, the 1765, yes. At 1765, the house was built, but it was built across the street and down the street. It's been moved three times. It right now is on its third location. The houses in that area all built up on fill. So they filled that part of the road.
So if you make it an acre, you're not, not, there's probably not any site here that's going to work.
No.
And the idea that.
I just threw out an acre as a hypothetical in response to a question that Kathleen was asking me.
Okay. So the idea, you know, again, is to kind of give an opportunity to, what was the funeral home?
For is some protective language for High Street, for those little houses on High Street, because we don't have any little houses like that anywhere else in town.
Yeah, we do.
Where?
Over where I live.
That little, that little?
East Milton, my lot's 5,000 square feet, maybe, on a good day.
So I will say.
Some of these are less than that.
And the house I had on Brushel Road had even less. And, and seems smaller now because they sold off the backyard for parking.
So that's one of the things, Danny, is in the design standards that I want to make sure everyone understands because they're not under, there's no standards in the commercial right now. But in this overlay, there are. And I, you know, being able to utilize my experience. And I, you know, being able to utilize my experience as an architect, looking at, if I, what, the way I approached these diagrams that I showed was that if I were going to design something here for this site and I want it to be sensitive to these small historic homes near it, what would my design strategy be? And my, and I said my design strategy would be that I would have, and we can go over the language, that I would have to have massing that adjusted itself to reflect the scale of the buildings next to it. And we can, we can look more specifically at the language and at the diagrams because at those di, the diagrams that I did helped try and explain the language. These diagrams. So, where you're having these scale transitions on High Street here and Adams Street here, you can have your design standards say that you, the, the, the design of, Adams Street is so different than the design of High Street, right? But you can still have a single building that can address the scales of both those streets. And you can do it through how you do your massing and how you do your articulation, and you can require certain things that, that allow, that give that scale transition to those smaller structures. And we can get to that in the design standards, but...
So, are you envisioning that it's going to look like buildings like this in the end? Or are you envisioning that there's going to be little houses left?
Well, the houses would still be there. This would be how somebody would adjust their scale next to the little house, so it would go to a different image. Get to one that shows from that side. So, these images, which showed, this is what you could do under the commercial. This is High Street.
That's what you can do now, or...
That's what you could do now.
Right.
That doesn't have any design standards. There's nobody to tell, I mean, you could...
This is the existing condition.
Yeah.
Right.
And then you could flip to the, the other way, Denny, go to the other way, that way. So, the, um, this is the M.A...
It's commercial, and this is instead of...
The MAPC one was up here and then the one on the bottom here. Yeah.
So, this is...
Yours, right?
So, this is the, yeah. So, these, so this is where I was saying, you have this scale transition required next to that smaller house and the same thing over here.
Looks a lot better.
So, it's a design standard that doesn't exist in the original MAPC. And I, what I did was say that the committee looked at those diagrams and said, "You know what? We adjusted the height down too." And we said, "Because there's no, you don't need 45 feet to build a three-story building." And so, you can do that in 35 feet in a mixed-use building, and you can do four stories in a 45, in 45 feet. So, and then you can require articulation in that massing, and we'll go through the standards and what, how I took what people felt was more in scale and how I put that into words, into the standards. So, we reviewed all of that, that, over different meetings at, so when I say I did, the committee in the end, you know, agreed that that was the direction to go. But I was the one who was able to put the visualization together.
Trying to find that one that you started with.
This is available on the, on the town's website at, um...
Yeah, both got it.
If you go to the Master Plan Implementation Committee, Presentations and Studies, Master Plan Milton Village Overlay Presentation 923. And there's a 84-page document here that takes in this whole thing.
Is this, and then this is another view of this, is this what you're envisioning at the end?
Well, it's one sample, yeah.
It's one sample, so this is like a build-out?
Right. If you build out those three sites according to what the zoning would allow you to build.
So, while you're looking through that, Denny, can I move on to the purpose portion? Okay.
Oof, now we're on number one. Let's move on to number one.
All right, so, "Purpose: To allow high-quality mixed-use development," and Kathleen did some revisions here, "That enhances Milton Village historic context, combines residential and commercial uses, contributes to revitalization of the business district, encourages investment near transit, supports preservation in the district, increases the range of town housing types, and strengthens the town tax base." So, that's the stated purpose. That's consistent with the goals in the master plan. So, we talked some about, is there any further discussion, or actually, is there any discussion on the goals, I mean, the purpose, rather?
No.
Okay. The allowable uses, it's what's otherwise allowed, and I sent you all this too, which I thought, I did this for myself, which is comparing the current business district, the Central Ave PUD, the Milton Village Central Ave PUD, which is what 88 Wharf was permitted under, and then this mixed-use. And so, the, the uses that are allowed in the business district are pretty extensive, but the overlay took out the things that I mentioned earlier about the auto-related and the gas station.
So, anything, I liked Kathy's explanation of the overlay, so it's helping me visualize it in my head. So, anything that wouldn't be allowed in that area is still not allowed. This just adds a little extra.
Yeah, what, what it allows, or it requires a mixed-use, but what it mainly allows that's currently not allowed is multifamily.
Okay.
That's the main thing that it's adding is multifamily. And it's taking away a couple of the...
It's family above the businesses.
Yes, yeah, because it's still requiring some kind of business on the first floor because that's part of a business district, is to have some business use, right? So...
Also, you know, it sort of, it makes for livelier space. I mean, if you look at old towns, they're all through Massachusetts, the central area, even East Milton before that, had, had shops on the first and, and people living up above. And it supports the activity of the commercial space because there are people living there that are going to use it. And so, that it makes for a different commercial mix to a certain extent, I think, because it has more sort of service-oriented business as opposed to somebody putting in, you know, kind of a, you know, more of a medical, mother or something.
No, I, I agree.
You know, so, so the, so the commercial mix that you get is sort of more, you know, bazillion nail salons and, you know, that's...
Like, the way I look at it is, things that you could kind of walk and go shop at rather than it's an insurance company or, yeah, East, we used to have the ice cream shops, the bowling alleys, the things. Now, they're mostly, you don't really walk through there to shop as much.
Yeah, you can't really get anything useful, anything.
Yes, right.
Yeah, it's, it's, that's a challenge overall to get that kind of use. It's interesting, Milton, or across the river in Lower Mills, they really, they do have a good mix of uses there. And so, it's, you know, they do have a roofing company there in all industrial use, but they do have a lot of other, you know...
Yeah, other things.
Other things, yeah.
But there's not anything that we're leaving off that we need to be adding more? You think we covered?
Yeah, the only thing we took out were the auto repair-related, gas station, you know, related, adult entertainment, which are allowed in our business districts, medical marijuana, we took out, which is a lot of our business.
Adult entertainment is allowed in our business? I thought it was only in certain...
Under special permit, by special permit. Same thing with medical marijuana, those are by special permit.
I thought it was only in a certain area, like, of the town, like, I thought...
Business districts.
Oh.
By special permit, right, Bill?
I thought this came up once before and it was only in a certain area of town. No?
Sexually, only sexually oriented businesses are in a certain part of town.
That's what we're talking about.
Oh, I thought you were talking about medical marijuana.
Oh, I'm sorry, no, I was talking about...
Sexually, sexually oriented businesses are only allowed in one particular place in town.
Yes, that's, yes, that's what I was talking about.
Medical marijuana is in any business district.
Oh, I'm sorry, we were, I was meaning that last sexual use, adult entertainment. That's what I meant.
Okay.
That, I, that is only allowed then, right, in one part of town?
Yes.
Okay.
Where?
Two Granite Ave.
Yeah.
Only one?
That's the, yeah.
I knew it was somewhere, yeah. You have to legally have to have it?
You have to have it one place.
Right.
Because it's free, it's a free speech situation.
Oh, geez, that's funny. Okay, I'm going to drive by two Granite Ave.
All right, so...
You got it all over there.
So...
Yeah, I got it. No ice cream, but yeah.
No ice cream.
We're ready to move on to number three, Rich.
Yes.
All right, so use and dimensional requirements. So, this is where the business use is required on 50% of the ground floor area, but you can also, in that ground floor area, have, you know, your entrances and common areas for your upper floor uses. So, that's A. B, lot coverage. In the presentation, I talked about how the underlying commercial zoning doesn't have a lot of dimensional requirements, so it doesn't have a lot coverage restriction. So, this has a restriction of 60% of the lot area, so that means your building footprint can't be more than 60%. And then, when you add parking to that, it can't be more than 90%. And what I showed in these diagrams meets that lot coverage requirement, just to give you a sense. In business districts, oftentimes, the buildings take up the whole property or the building in the parking takes up the whole property. So, the, the coverage is being pulled back in this overlay. The next thing that controls the size and scale, we've talked about some already, is the building height. So, we, the only place, so the, so when you start, before you get to any bonuses, it's three stories and 35 feet. And because there's such a topographic change, we decided we needed to make sure we were very explicit, like we've talked about other times, of where you're measuring, right? And how you're measuring? So, it's saying here that the height of any building is measured from the mean grade of the natural ground contiguous to the building at the property's street frontage. Because if you didn't do that, you could be measuring it halfway up a 20-foot change of topography. So, this is very clear that it's coming at...
From Adams Street?
That's the frontage. So, if you're in Adams Street address, then it's, your frontage is on Adams Street, right?
Okay.
And then, so that's where we said here, "For example, a property between Adams Street and High Street would measure height from Adams Street frontage at the elevation of the sidewalk." So, it wouldn't be measuring it from the side and halfway up.
Bill needs to scroll up so the public can see where we're at.
Oh, Bill, can you go to, we're on 3C? And there's another important thing I think we've run into. Some of us who've been here on the board longer have definitely run into this. When you're talking about, well, what's the, we talked about height being measured in feet, but what about height being measured in stories, right? Because it's three stories and a certain feet. So, the story has, is tied to the definition of basement because basement's not considered a story. So, again, being more explicit here is that it's not a story, so it is a basement if the first floor is no more than four feet above the mean grade of the natural ground contiguous to the building at the property's street frontage again. Because if you measured this differently, as it's defined elsewhere in our code, it would mean, this is what happened at Hendry's, actually.
Yeah.
Hendry's, what many people is going to be seeing on Central Ave as the first floor is really the basement because of a definition of how you measure story. So, we're again, being pretty, we're being more explicit here and making sure that our height is getting tied to the sidewalk on Adams Street. So, and then, height being measured to the midpoint of the slope of a pitched roof. Other places in our bylaw, it's measured to the peak. And we felt that this was a, we're, we're reducing the overall height for this down to the 35 feet, that we needed to allow that 35 feet to be in a pitch, otherwise, we're going to end up with all flat roofs and we're not going to get any pitched roofs. And we want some pitched roofs. And then, this other part about other things being able to protrude above that is consistent with other aspects of our zoning bylaw. These things are allowed to go above that height restriction. So, cupolas, chimneys, elevator overruns, things that are not occupied space. Then D is another dimensional criteria, and that's setbacks. So, the existing business is...
I'm sorry, before you go, I had a question on, on the height. And what made me think of that was when you said the four feet.
Mm-hmm.
Is this, does this encourage underground parking?
Pretty much, because...
The way that this is set up?
Yeah, because a lot of these sites have topographic change. And so, the basement wouldn't count as a story, and so, you're buried anyway, so you're not going to want to put, you're definitely not putting housing in space that doesn't have access to daylight, right? So, put your parking in there, right? It was like in the, in the section diagram that I showed when you're kind of underground from one side. So, if you were measuring, you know, because it's sloping, like, a couple of different ways, each site's going to be a little different how you design it, but the idea is that it can definitely work. Okay?
Mm-hmm.
All right, so on the setbacks, this is consistent with the underlying commercial zoning, six feet on the side lot lines and 12 feet at the rear, unless there's already a party wall there, then you can build to the party wall. So, if there's a building next to you that's on, that's built to its property line, then you can build to your property line. That's the underlying zoning.
Underlying zoning allows that.
And this is consistent with that. You're not going to do that with a residential, though, because you're not going to have, be able to put any windows in. Because the building codes tell you that you can't, you have to have firewalls if you're on your property line, and you're not allowed windows in that firewall if you're right on your property line. You move three feet in, you're allowed a small percentage of windows. You move five feet in, 10 feet in, and more and more glass that you're allowed. So, if you're going to be building a residential building, you know, you're going to need to give yourself enough room to allow windows.
So, even if you're a business on the first floor, so...
Business on the first floor could go to six feet.
Could go all the way, and then it can move in once it becomes residential on the next story?
Right.
And then move in.
So, kind of like we're showing in those diagrams there.
Zero or six feet.
Zero is only if there's a building already on the property line. And that's common in a business because a lot of times, these buildings were built right, you know, like, you think about a lot of buildings like in Boston, even...
Well, you're just saying, all the Marlborough Street and the Back Bay, all of those are party walls.
I mean, even look at, you know, Lower Mills, even those small buildings, they're all party walls, they're buildings, there's no, there's not space between all of the buildings.
So, party walls mean right against each other?
Yeah, it's actually, in many situations, it's one wall with an extra thickness because it's supporting two houses.
It's like a shared wall.
Yeah.
But in new construction, people don't, they actually build their own walls to support their own buildings now, but...
Two, two, two pieces, right? You put a piece of paper between them.
Yeah, I mean, they, they have to be, you know, two or three hour rated, so, they, because you can't have a fire spread from one to the other. There's, there's complexities in building them that are close to the property line too in terms of construction, so unless there's some overriding reason to do it, I don't think most people would choose that complexity.
We've seen several of the brick walls fall down, down around the waterfront in Boston, not, not here.
Oh, yeah, no.
In Boston.
Right.
They try to save that party wall, and all of a sudden, the party wall will just collapse because it's...
Well, I mean, just to, typically, your wall comes down and you have a foundation, right? That takes the weight, transfers it to the ground. If you have a wall here and you have your new wall come down, you can't go that way. So, now you have to build a foundation that goes this way. But what if yours is going deeper than this one? Then you're undermining that foundation. Just adds a level of complexity, therefore, cost, that people are not going to find justifiable. But we didn't change the, this, because some of these sites are pretty small, you put too many setback in and you can't, you don't have a footprint left to build on. And if you're doing multifamily and you're doing, you know, something like this, you have an elevator and two stairs, that takes up area and you're... have an elevator and two stairs, that takes up area in your floor plan, too. So, but you still have your lot coverage. So if you even, if you tried to draw a line, and I did that on the, in this presentation, the six feet and 12, that's more than 60%. So you're going to have to push it in somewhere already, because you can't take up more, you can't have a footprint bigger than 60% of your lot. So you might choose six feet on one side, 12 feet on another, 10 on the other, you know, to get you squeezed in to your 60%. Did I make that clear?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's a great thing, because, I mean, you know, that it does pervert, there's some sense of open space, some area around it that you wouldn't otherwise have.
Okay. So any other discussion about setbacks? Okay. Alright, now we get to the bonuses. This is a bonus of an additional floor, and it's for properties that have their frontage on Adams Street only. And these are only granted at the discretion of the planning board. So the planning board would have to decide that there's enough benefit from this bonus, from the development, that it's worthy to grant this bonus. So if someone came, comes in and said, I'm, I'm doing, proposing this, and we want a bonus, the planning board could say, no, that doesn't meet this criteria.
Right.
Right? So the first one is what we, what the, was called a district improvement incentive. And that is, you know, this is Milton Landing area. We have a beautiful public waterfront, and there's, it could be enhanced, and it could be maintained through a fund. You know, it's almost, it would be a special use fund. And so capital improvements could come from contributions to a fund, kind of like we have a fund for the Affordable Housing Trust, a fund for the Shade Trees. And this would be a district improvement fund. So a contribution, so we can't pick at a dollar value, because it depends on the project. You know, a small site, the dollar value would be, wouldn't be appropriate as on this much larger development. But the idea is that the planning board would decide what would be significant enough contribution, in order to say, yes, you meet this criteria. Otherwise, if we said, they said, we want to make $10,000, we said, $10,000's not enough, we're not granting you the, the bonus. So that, or we could say, okay, $10,000 and more affordables, or, you know, sort of negotiate what would be a sufficient level of benefit. So that's the district improvement, that's, and, and you can see a comment off to the side on page three, where it says, a district fund would need to be established for this purpose, just, which is, it's not uncommon for the town to set up these funds. It's right...
Yeah, no, no, you do it all the time.
Right. So there's some things listed here. The Milton Village Central Ave Revitalization Committee, when they reviewed it, they felt as if just streetscape improvements at the frontage of the property, it's being redeveloped, should definitely not be sufficient. It needed to go beyond that. And so they provided their guidance, or their input to that. So the planning board would need to consider whether we want to, you know, change any of this language. It's that we did, at the MPIC, say significantly improve and enhance, and we gave examples, but we didn't say that those, on any one of those in and of themselves were sufficient. So we can come back to that more specific, if we wanted to...
Yeah, I don't know that you want to have it so specific. I mean, it seems to me, you want to have the flexibility to say, okay, looking at this project, and knowing what we know now, that we think, you know, it's more important to have more bike access, and, you know, because we want to encourage that sort of activity, or we, something changes along the waterfront, and we want to have, you know, better docks, and some better support for the, you know, for kayaking, and all that sort of stuff. I mean, there'd be any number of things. So I wouldn't want to make it so strict that you had to, this is my checklist, these are the only things I ever want. I mean, because you want to have the district be around for longer than a week and a half, and, and the idea of what you might want for improvements, we might change.
So you didn't, you didn't make, recommend any changes to this language, Kathleen?
No, I'm just saying, yeah, I think that's broad, I mean, I think that gives a general sense of what we're looking for, and I don't think I'd want to have it be so tight, that, you know, these are the, these are the six things I want, period. And I just want, I think the language is broad enough to allow the planning board to look at what the project looks like, and what is a need in the neighborhood, and, and allow for that.
Alright, moving on then, to the next bonus opportunity would be an affordable housing incentive. So the, the zoning as a baseline requires 10% of the units to be affordable, but to qualify for the bonus, that number would have to increase to 15 to 20%. And again, it would be kind of based on the scale of the project, that's why there's a range. And it also could be some combination of affordable and streetscape, for example, or public realm. And then, the third is the historic preservation incentive. And preserving historic structure can be more expensive, and it can be a bit more challenging how to plan your project around it. And so the idea is, if you get an incentive, it gives you a financial incentive to preserve the historic structure. And so that, the other thing that is in here, that's, I flagged, and the MPIC didn't come to any change language on this, was that MAPC recommended that a height bonus be granted for new construction on a site without a historic structure, if a payment is made into a district fund to support historic preservation. The question that I had about that was, well, how does the fund get distributed? Who, who can apply for it? How is it supporting historic preservation? Do you have any thoughts about that, Kathleen?
That's, you know, I mean, I don't, I don't know how you would do that. I mean, it's one thing to sort of, you know, we have these affordable housing trusts that are set up by statute and by town bylaw. You put into your affordable housing provisions in your zoning, that funds are going to be paid to the Affordable Housing Trust? And, and that's already there. And, and the trust is going to do what it's going to do with affordable housing. But we don't have a freestanding kind of historic preservation entity.
So one way, I mean, I, conceptually working would be, let's say you own historic property, and, you know, you need new copper gutters, and copper's expensive, but copper's the historic replacement material. Could you apply for a grant from the fund?
Yeah, but you'd have to, you know, you'd have to set it up, you know, somehow.
Who would manage it? Who would...
Well, it's usually, I mean, a town thing. I mean, we have, you know, towns have funds to have people help pay for their septic systems. You know, if you're, you know, distressed property owner, and, and your septic system has failed, you know, we use CBDG, Flop CBDG, whatever.
CBDG.
Yeah, whatever. But we do so, I've been in meetings since 7 o'clock this morning, so. And I have another morning to meeting tomorrow. So I, yeah, I'm not putting everything together. But you, you would apply, and you have a grant program that does it. And so, you know...
We don't have that.
But you don't have that.
No.
But maybe we could establish that with our historical commission bill to take that on?
I'm not sure that you would even do that. I think maybe you want to do that through, like, the design review committee, and have some function of it, if you're going to go with historic. Maybe it does come under the historic preservation.
Well, one thought even is, you know, historic, if you think about the history of this district, and you think about some other places, I think it was Gloucester that I saw, the beautiful historic markers and signage, and, you know, you could learn about the history of the area. And that could be in, in the public realm, so part of the landing, what have you. Even if something came to be where, I mean, ideally, the Swift Hat could be restored, and there could be an exhibit space in there that would be some history of the area, in an ideal world. But if there's a fund that could help pay for some of that, and it could be justified as to why that would be necessary, that's what this is saying, is an option.
Well, yeah, I mean...
Looking for something along the lines of a CPA board.
That's what I was just going to say.
Exactly, that's exactly it. You're right.
Yeah, homegrown CPA.
But that's what this is.
Yeah, no, I'm trying to think about, yeah, just sort of seeing how we geologically set that up, but...
I mean, if you think about it, CPA, affordable housing, open space, and historic preservation, they're all right here.
Mm-hmm.
All right here. Yes.
So, can you point out where, the way I, I read for A, B, C, is that a developer can choose one to get a bonus?
That's the way I understood it, yeah.
Right. So...
Baby?
So, I mean...
It doesn't mean that we say yes.
That doesn't mean we say yes to it, but I would like to see affordable housing and historic preservation.
I think you could choose all of them.
I think you could, the planning board could say, we'd like to see a combination, yeah.
Okay.
I don't think it's, I don't think it's...
So, so the planning board could say no, if a developer came and only had one? The planning board can say no, because you said they have to justify.
Well, they have to justify, so I don't think you would be just saying, well, you're just, you're just doing affordable housing, and we want you to do other things. I don't think you could be able to say no on that ground.
But what if they said, okay, we're going to do 20% affordable, and we said to them, look, rather than doing 20% affordable, how about doing 15% affordable, and doing something contribution to the fun, a fund for the public realm, or...
And they say, no, we only want 20%, otherwise, we're leaving.
I doubt you'd get that, but...
Yeah, that's kind of a surprising response.
No, I don't know. I'm just saying that, like, where they say, we, we feel by right, we can do it, and we're going to sue. We want...
It's not a by right, it's an overlay district. It's a, the underlying zoning is by right. This is not.
So I think what Denny's underlying concern seems to be, is that, is there a situation in which we say no, where we're challenged, because the developer has met the requirements of the overlay? When I said, we have the option to say no, you want to know, is there some kind of a...
But I did everything else.
Right.
Well, I did everything.
Well, I mean, you have to always, when you're making decisions, justify it somehow, planning, you know, that there's some planning perspective. You'd have to say...
Even in the affirmative, you actually are supposed to do that, right?
You have to say reasons. So you can't just say, well, you know...
We, we wanted more than one of these options. I mean, the way I read it is, they only have to do one option, and they could, you know, we could have three developers show up and say, we just want to give to the fund, we don't want to do any more than 10% affordable. And then we're kind of like, what are we doing? We're never going to get affordable. Or you could have three developers show up and say, we'll just do the historic, and we're not, we'll do 10% affordable, and we're not going to do anything else.
It still says here, at the discretion of the planning board, though.
Right.
In the form of only one. So I guess, we could think about whether those words, in the form of only one, if that, if the, that's on page two.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so why don't we flag that as something to look at?
Yeah. Yeah. Where are you?
In the first paragraph on four.
Oh, page two.
Oh, page two, yeah.
Okay. Okay. Okay, in the form of only one. What about, say, a combination of, or something?
Well, I don't think you can, oh, you can't require all of them.
No, 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 no.
One or more?
Or I think, let's just, just...
We'll work on, we'll circle that.
Kathleen probably is a good word.
We'll wrap at 10. And we'll put, would have put a pin, pin on that, because I'm, I'm pooped, too.
Yeah. And I have a 5:45 AM plate.
Okay. Well, we can wrap earlier. There's nothing that says we have to stay until 10.
I just want to...
Exactly.
Did you finish the page?
You know, the, the design standards are a lot of detail, so why don't we get through, up into the design standards? How's that?
Okay.
And we'll pick up the design standards next week? How's that?
Sounds good.
Alright, so...
Four and five.
We're almost, we're almost...
I'm good.
Yeah, we're almost to the same thing, but I, I think it's a good stopping point.
I agree.
Okay, so, I think, I'd like us to continue to talk about that contribution to a historic fund, okay? So we might flag that, too. That's at the, the last sentence in paragraph four, C on page three.
Okay, four, C, okay.
Alright, now...
Yeah, because, I mean, the problem with that is that you, when you, when you sort of have a contribution, and it comes into the town, unless you've got a special place to put it, it goes into the general fund, and then to get it out, you've got to do an appropriation, so this makes it a lot harder to deal with.
I think that's just something that, this is a little tough. But alright, on the historic preservation, first of all, in order to qualify for this, your building has to be on the National Register of Historic Places, or the Mass Cultural Resource Information System, which is through the Mass Historical Commission, or be a pending nomination and good standing on the state or national, or state, or national or state register. These are all common criteria for, like, tax, historic tax credit kind of projects, so it's, those are appropriate, I think. Kathleen, would you agree?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay. So then, the purpose of the incentive is to encourage the preservation of building, structure, sites, and settings, even elements of historic or architectural significance. So one of the other things that is granted here, I want to call your attention to, is the last sentence in that paragraph on the top of page four, because I think this is an important item.
The top of page, that's starting in the design standards.
No, it's still part of the historical.
Oh, no, your, your version is a little bit longer.
Oh, I'm sorry, then maybe, I printed mine, sorry.
That's okay.
It's five, so it's section five.
Okay.
The second paragraph of section five.
Okay.
And it says, at the discretion of the planning board, relief from dimensional or parking requirements may be granted.
Mm-hmm. You should be taking out the comma. Oh, too many commas in this thing.
Okay, that's, that's okay.
And the, the reason this is important is...
It's the very bottom of, Bill, it's at the very bottom of, in the corner, it's the very, the last line.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, so that people can see. At the discretion of the planning board.
You gotta take out the comma after the word granted.
Okay. The important thing here is that one of the significant problems with the historic buildings can be the parking, because, you know, if you wanted to rehab a building that doesn't have any land, like the Swift Hat, for example, or is that One Elliott, or the Milton Sport and Spa, is that Two Elliott, Bill? They just don't have room for parking, right? So you want to keep the buildings, and they don't have land for the parking, so you, you want to give some flexibility of how to solve the parking. So this sentence allows us not just, so it says, at the discretion of the planning board, relief from dimensional or parking requirements may be granted to accommodate the historic structure and property. So that's a useful tool, if you want to encourage...
Yeah, I think you definitely want to, because Elliott, I mean, it actually has a little bit more land, but the Masonic building doesn't have all, any.
A little bit in back for where they park 14 or something, like 16 cars, or something like that.
So if you want, you definitely want to save those, so you want to have the ability to say, no, we don't really want to have you put 18,000 spaces on some place.
Right, I mean, like, I've done the analogy, I did in the presentation, what, the Masonic, if you built a commercial building of that size, you know, you would need 109 parking spaces, right? So even if you converted that building, you probably still can't meet the parking requirements if you put, you have 14 or 16, I forget what's in there, but it's, you know, so maybe you can, you, let's say you were, you were required under this zoning 16 spaces, and you could only fit 14 on your property because of your existing building. You know, the planning board can discuss, can you share that residential and business? You know, what, you know, is there another way to accommodate that, so that you can get new life in that historic building, right?
Yep.
Alright, so that's, I just wanted to point that out, because I think it's important to understand what the, what that, why that's a good tool. And then, the incentive, the priority is in... And then, the incentive, the priority is in keeping the existing buildings in their place, not moving them. You know, there was some discussion about moving the Swift Hat house, for example, to another site. This is, to get the bonus, we want you to keep the building where it is, unless for some other reason, you know, the board determined that moving it was acceptable. But it's laying out there right out, right in the language that the preference is to keep it where it is. Okay?
Yep.
And that's it, we're up to design standards.